Please join me in the prayers. Dear God, today as this session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessings on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Just so the clerk knows, I don't know why the camera's on the clerk, but you're up on the full screen behind you. So, I don't...
Thanks for the heads up.
Well, yeah, just so you don't do anything. So, there you go.
Feels like we're at a stadium. Still up there, but I think the people at home they see on the LTC is the right screen, I believe. Okay, wonderful. Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Chow.
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Here.
Counselor Getchea.
Here.
Counselor Janess.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercier.
Here.
Counselor Newman.
Here.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Rourke.
Here.
Counselor Scott.
Here.
Counselor Yem.
Here.
Eleven present.
Do you have any moment of silence? Counselor Mercier.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Isabel Rita Izzy Bello, lifelong Lowell resident. Izzy was a dietitian and managed a cafeteria at the St. John's Hospital in Lowell for nearly 20 years before retiring at 70. She inspired her family through her hard work, perseverance, and sacrifice for their needs. She certainly inspired me by her friendship. Her survivors include her three daughters, Dolly, Joan, and Judy; her eight grandchildren; her nine great-grandchildren; her two sisters, Maria Neves and Connie Sweeney. She was predeceased by her son Daniel Bello and her granddaughter Cara Bello; and her three brothers Manny, George, and Tony; and her niece Maureen Neves Cares. We offer our condolences to her family, relatives, and many friends. She will be truly missed. And I'd like to offer a moment of silence also in Docking Chamber for Jerry Wayne Bunker TV Pa, husband of the love of his life Donna TV Pa, with whom he would have celebrated their 52nd wedding anniversary in July. Jerry loved classic cars and was a proud member of the Drakken Road Runners and also a member of VFW Walker Roger Post 662 Auxiliary, but his deepest love was his grandchildren. In addition to his wife Donna TV Pa of Lowell, he is survived by his three children, Michael, Joseph, and Doreen. He also had Linda Foley and John Reel that he loved like his own children. He had 10 grandchildren. We offer our condolences to him, to his family, relatives, and many friends. He will be truly missed. And let us also offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber to all those who have passed since our last council meeting, as well as all the people who died in the war in the Ukraine. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Any other memorial? Counselor Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chambers for John J. Jake Davis from a well-known acre family. Jake Davis, 71, of Tuck Spray, Massachusetts, passed away after a brief illness on Friday, March 11, 2022, at Everett Rehab and Nursing Center in Everett, Mass. Born in Lowell, Massachusetts, December 23, 1950, the son of the late William and late Madeline Casey Davis, he received his education in the Lowell school system. A veteran of the Vietnam War, Jake served his country as a member of the U.S. Army. Jake was also a utility technician for many years with the City of Lowell Water Department until his retirement and was a loyal member of ASME Local 1705. Previously Jake worked for Curious Citizens for over 20 years. He was a former executive officer at Local 1705, was a good friend of Counselor Robinson's, a kind and thoughtful son, brother, and friend. Jake was also there for his mother and siblings in good times and in bad. He was a passionate sports fan, especially with the Red Sox, Patriots, the Golden Gloves, and of Lowell politics. Jake is survived by his sister Dorothy A. Davis Sweeney and her husband Paul of Lowell; his brother Joe Joseph A. Davis of Eastern Africa, Pennsylvania; five nephews, Patrick Sweeney and his wife Jennifer; Sean Sweeney, Brendan Sweeney, Brian Sweeney, and Garrett Davis; also several grandnieces and grandnephews. He's also the brother of the late Robert Bobby Davis. One more, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in Docking Chamber for Walter Wally J. Van Denter, Jr., age 47, a longtime resident of Lowell, passed away on Tuesday, March 15, 2022, at a courageous battle with brain cancer. He was surrounded by his family and friends and passed peacefully in the arms of his loving wife Jolynn Bassinet Van Denter, with whom he would have celebrated 19 years of marriage this March. Wally was born in Lowell on February 10, 1975, and was the son of Walter and Mary Ann Van Denter. Wally graduated from the Greater Lowell Technical High School in 1993, was a four-year varsity player and a member of three Super Bowl championship teams with the Voke. He began work for UPS in 1992 and was a driver for over 27 years. He was a pillar amongst his Teamster brothers, which represented for many years as union steward. He loved coaching his boys, was a fixture over the years with Lowell Junior Football and Shippard Park Baseball. As a coach, he impacted many players through his encouragement and support. An incredible husband and father, Wally cherished his time with his children and always made himself available for every event. Wally spent his winter skiing with his family and his summers riding with Howie Davidson with Jolynn. He had a wonderful sense of humor and was also the life of a party. Wally placed family, friends, love, and laughter as his priorities. Having him walk through your door was a pleasure and a gift. Without intent, simply out of his nature, he impacted many lives. He cared deeply for his wife and his boys and championed them through any challenge. He loved his children, was the definition of an uncle, never failing to make a niece or nephew smile. A perfect instigator, he would tease with a smile and could fix everything with a hug. He was meant to be shared, the many friends, large family, and memories they'll be able to have are priceless. He was a giant amongst men who left behind a void never to be filled. We pray for all of you having Wally in your life, and he was ours, and for that, Jolynn, Nick, and Travis are very grateful. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other memorials? To Mayor's Business 2.1, Communication Remote Zoom Participation. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Janess, second by Counselor Leahy on favor of the eye. The motion is passed. Before I take up on motion on item 2.2, I would like to ask for a suspension of the rule. I'd like to make a statement by motion by Counselor Leahy, second by Counselor Mercier. And if the counselors don't mind, I would like to make the statement from up here. If there's any objection, I can go down to Vice Mayor Getchea's desk. Is that okay from up here? I want to offer a sincere apology to anyone who was offended by my recent presentation to Mike Tyson because the presentation occurred the same day as the city's White Ribbon Day event. It is now obvious to me that the presentation made to Mr. Tyson that same day created conflicting messaging on this topic. As I stated when it was first brought to my attention, there is no place for domestic violence or violence against women in this city. This is my heartfelt position. It is with sincerity and honesty to say that I did not have enough understanding of the impact this might cause. I have learned from this unfortunate situation and will work to understand the actions that can reflect the best in our community on the topic. My apology is heartfelt. I have left a message with Issa Walter Gorgeous, Executive Director, The Center for Hope and Healing, Inc., and hope to speak with her soon so we can work together on this important topic. I work very hard to represent the city in the most positive manner and have learned from this mistake. 2.2, we now shall move on to the next item on the agenda. Communication Director of Human Resources Discussion Regarding Selection of Applicants to Interview and Scheduling for City Manager Position Through Madam Manager to the Director of Human Resource. Mary Calery, would you make your presentation, please?
Thank you, Mayor, and city councils. Tonight I left each one of the counselors, along with the mayor, a tally of the 14 applicants that applied for the city manager's position. It's a total of votes that each candidate received from the 10 counselors and the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went through all 14 resumes as well, and I turned in the three as I was asked to do. But I didn't know the results, and we got the results from Mary Calery on our desk. She passed them out before the council meeting started. And I don't know if I'm supposed to say it, but I don't know if it's public, but I'm not going to hide at all. We have 14 candidates that applied. I'm very happy, but I'm not going to play a game here. And I don't look upon it as a game, but when you stop and see what we're looking at, 11 of our city counselors, 11 of us voted for Tom Golden. The next candidate got four, and that was practically it. I don't think four is not even a majority. Having said that, I didn't just look at their resumes, I did a little bit more searching than that. And if it's any consolation to have anybody nervous, I'm not going to mention any names. I don't know that that's fair to do, but I was listening to the news today on WCAP, and the news director said in the morning and afternoon that there were 14 candidates. I don't know how, again, they knew there were 14 candidates, because I thought in my packet it said confidential, so I took it to mean confidential, but since everybody seems to know, and it's no secret, there are 14 candidates, and that's why I said it. So I did a little digging, and the second highest vote getter was a city manager in Kentucky, Tennessee, Alabama, Alaska, Maryland. And I'm wondering if this gentleman, whom four people supported, wants to do all 50 states? I really don't know. Is he going into all the states? I'm not sure. Then another one I was concerned about was a former city manager, and he just got fired just a while ago, probably in January of this year. He got fired. There was a history of problems...
Mr. Mayor, could we have a point of order and ask the solicitor if it's okay to even release this information into the public?
I'm not naming any names.
Just because it can be assumed who people are by saying these things, and I just want to make sure that it's okay to share any information about somebody that could be turned to their name. And I just think that through you to the city solicitor, I just would ask that question before we go too far into pointing out people's resumes without making...
Counselor Getchea, I'm going to have Counselor Mercier finish the statement first, then I will ask the city solicitor to see if that's doable.
Well, the point is, ask the city solicitor before the statements are made and they go too far. That's the point. It's not finish the statement, it's about, okay, can we ask the question to the city solicitor first before the statements are finished? Because right now we're starting to share things that are in applications, and we ask that this not happen. And I don't know if it's okay or not, that's why I'm asking for a point of order through you to the solicitor.
Counselor Mercier, is there any comment to put the names?
I'm not naming.
You're not naming?
Did I name anybody's name? I didn't name anybody's name.
So, I'm going to have you finish your comment.
I'm just doing an overview on the list of candidates that we have, and nobody knows who's who. There was another person on the list, and right on the resume it said, "Large Doc Letters All Capital Confidential Application." That's what that person wrote. To me, it indicated that they didn't want to be known, let anybody know that they were applying for this job. However, if that was one of the two that we were going to choose, or one of the three, we would have to divulge that person's name, and I don't know how they would take that, but that's what we would have to do. There's another candidate, and he was involved in his area, and he managed day-to-day operations in a village of 4,500, and then in another town, 4,500, and another town of 8,000. So how does he feel about a population of 115,000? So these are the things that I looked at and said, seven of the candidates are from other states. They would probably have to move here if they became city manager, and I'm not counting New Hampshire and Massachusetts, although some in Massachusetts were a little bit further. So 14 candidates, seven of them comes from all over this United States. I'm not even naming that, so again, there's nothing to hide there or be nervous about. But I look at this and I say to myself, although we have a lot of candidates, how sincere do we want to be with them? I'm looking at what everyone here already told me without telling me that 11 of us want Tom Golden. The second highest vote getter gets four votes. So I'm willing to hear what everybody has to say, but I'd be willing to make a motion to have Tom Golden come in for an interview next Wednesday. That's my motion. Anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
Motion by Counselor Mercier to have Rob Golden to come in for an interview.
Yes. And then if we're not satisfied with his interview, we get 13 others to choose from, but that's the way I see it.
Sure. Second by Counselor Scott. Just by the nature of this, I'm going to ask Mr. Clerk to do a roll call.
Mr. Mayor.
Mayor Chow.
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Yes.
Counselor Getchea.
Yes.
Counselor Janess.
Yes.
Counselor Leahy.
Yes.
Counselor Mercier.
Yes.
Counselor Newman.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Rourke.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Yes.
Counselor Yem.
Yes.
11 years.
We still can discuss the situation. Counselor Getchea, did you want to say something?
There's no point at this point. Thank you.
Counselor Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was hoping we could be recognized to discuss the issue before it was put to the vote. Ultimately, it was the outcome that I did support. I just wanted to speak on it briefly. In submitting my preference to the HR department, after reviewing the resumes of the applicants, it was my feeling that there was one candidate, Mr. Golden, who was overwhelmingly qualified for this position. He was, to me, the only candidate that I considered with sufficient qualifications to invite for an interview. So the outcome of the motion that was just put on the floor and voted on is the outcome that I supported going into the meeting. So even though we've already voted on the motion, I just did think it was important to take the opportunity to speak on it and let the public know why, the reasons why. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Any other comments? Counselor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, some of us on this council, first-time counselors, and I would like to at least allow the solicitor to respond to the question that was asked earlier, although it's not relevant anymore. I still would like to know, in a process like this, through you to the solicitor, in a process like this, is it pertinent to release any kind of information at this phase of the process?
Well, there's a couple of things going on. First, there's whatever rules that the council themselves set up, and I think that's one of the things that Counselor Mercier was referring to, that the information was intended to remain public, including the number of applicants. As far as the normal process with respect to when information becomes public, when candidates are selected to be finalists is when their information becomes public. As to the point that Counselor Getchea had raised, it is possible, even if you're not divulging someone's name, to divulge enough information so that their identification then becomes clear and obvious. I don't think that that occurred in this particular case, but I believe that's what Counselor Getchea was questioning and making sure that that didn't, that that didn't in fact happen, which it didn't.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Leahy and Counselor Newman.
I'm all set, thank you.
Counselor Newman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the HR Director, Mary Calery, since we select Tom Golden for interview next Wednesday, I ask that you send, express our thanks to the rest of the applicant that has not been selected for interview. Thank you.
Yes, I will.
Any other comments? Counselor Yem?
I would like, even though all of us, including myself, voted to have Tom Golden being interviewed, I would like to have opportunity to hear from other candidate that some of us, you know, selected as well. So I'm not sure that would be possible. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
That, my understanding is that, Mr. Clerk, can you read the motion one more time?
The motion was by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Scott, to have Representative Golden come in for an interview regarding the city manager's position on Wednesday.
My understanding is that the motion is not exclusive to Rep. Golden if you'll make a motion to invite another candidate to come for an interview. I guess before we go address that, let me, if it's okay, I could ask a question from up here also to the Director of Human Resource. Mary, could you maybe expound a little bit how, you know, how many votes for the second runner-up and the third runner-up, and where they are from and in this situation? In your opinion, because you've been doing this, you have the most experience here, in your opinion, how does that work out in terms of having them be interviewed? What they have to fly to Lowell? What they can be done by Zoom? Things like that?
So the second candidate with the most, and I'll just say votes, was four. Three of those votes came in at second place, and one vote came in at third place. We do not fly them here, to my knowledge, and now that we have Zoom, in the past we've done them through Zoom instead of in-person for, you know, automatic Massachusetts people.
Counselor Leahy?
My vote was, I thought the intention was that we're just going to interview one person, and that was it, and that was done by majority vote. So I think, you know, unfortunately, we're not going to hear from any other candidates because of the... we're not gonna hear from any other candidates because the vote was taken and that, and that's the deal. I think that was the intent of the motion, but...
Counselor Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that we have one consensus candidate that we've all put forward as supporting here. No other candidate garnered even a majority of support for interviews. Although that differs from the process that was put forward from the Personnel Subcommittee when this process started, I think it really only makes sense to interview the top candidate at this time. I think that if, for whatever reason, we decide not to move forward, or we can't come to an agreement with this candidate, then I think that we need to look at really restarting this process and trying to, trying a broader search. Because if we can't get another candidate that has a majority support of this council to even be interviewed, I think that it's clear that we don't, we don't have the right list of candidates here. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Counselor Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That is exactly the intention of my motion, how Counselor Janess said it. The first number-one candidate got all eleven votes. The second candidate got four, not even a majority. I ask that Tom Golden be, if you can remember what I said, I would like him to be interviewed next Wednesday if that's, you know, meets everybody's needs at that time. And I didn't ask to interview any others. I would just ask that, and if at that time, we didn't think that he answered correctly or was impressive, then we can go back and look and interview others. That's how I put it. I didn't ask to interview the second one and the third one, and I thought it was quite clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Mercier, for clarifying that. Just to have only Tom Golden, Mr. Clark, for the interview, and no other candidates, if you could make the note to make that clear.
Yeah, in terms of, I think, in terms of procedurally, we call this a special meeting for Wednesday. We have to, special meeting, the only item being on there is the interview of Mr. Golden. I need a time, and I'll post it appropriately in accordance with the open meeting law.
Sure. I'm just using that as a reference. If people, I don't know if people can make it next Wednesday, but whenever they can make it, let's schedule a meeting to have the interview. I'm not setting the day or time myself, but I used it as an example.
Wonderful. Counselor Robinson?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Yeah, it appears the wish of this council is to bring in candidate Golden, and I'll make a motion next Wednesday, 5:30 p.m. Start the process. Can I get a second to the motion?
Second.
Second by Counselor Mercier on favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Counselor Young, you hear from your colleague, it's been firm. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm okay with that. Thank you.
Any other comments? Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Mercier, second by Counselor Scott, on favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Three, City Clerk, 3.1, Minutes of Finance Subcommittee, March 15th, City Council Meeting, March 15th, for acceptance, motion to accept and place on file by Counselor, Counselor Robinson, you want to comment on that?
Yes, the only thing I had brought to attention to the, Mr. Clerk's attention, and that has been amended. I don't know if that needs to be reflected on file as far as the correction of motion 10.7 being referred to a separate committee, and that was corrected by the clerk.
Yes, Counselor, the correction was made, the minutes had not been accepted, so it was able to make the correction beforehand, and it'll be reflected.
Thank you very much.
As indicated.
Any other comments here? None. Motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Nune, second by Counselor Rook, on favor of the eye, opposed, say no, the eyes have it, motions carry. Four, Communications from City Manager, 4.1. A, motion response, cross-connection and backflow survey, any comment? Counselor Gitcher?
You know, we received a lot of phone calls about the cross-connection program and the way it's being held by the city and the information to businesses. Is there someone here tonight to speak about that, Madam Mayor?
Paul Pyris from the Water Utility is present.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions, but I just want to read the intent. It says in the memo that was written, "The low cross-connection control program exists to comply with Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection Regulation 310 CMR 22." Mr. Pyris, are you familiar with that?
Yes. Yes, am.
Is the mic on?
Okay, sorry.
Is the microphone working?
Maybe if you speak right into it. Yeah, it sounds like it's on.
So when you look at it, there are different methods that are acceptable for backflow preventions. Do you know how many different methods are acceptable?
There's RPZs, DCVAs, atmospheric air gaps. There's a variety of them.
Okay, so there's a total of six of them, and of the six, how many does a city allow businesses to actually implore during your inspection? Or what is the force recommendation from the city to contain cross-connection?
The two most popular ones are gonna be DCVAs and RPZs.
Okay, so a double-check valve and a...
Reduced pressure.
Why are we not allowing people to use vacuum breakers that are allowed? And just for the public's knowledge is, an air gap is a separation between the water source and the contamination source. An RPZ is a concealed unit that can be tested biannually, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pyris, that can be done biannually and at a cost to the business of a hundred dollars each test. So in both tests, take less than five to ten minutes to do. So, you know, the city is supposed to be a government agency not to make money off the back of the residents or the businesses, but to cover the cost of the program. And because we hired outside people, and now we walk into places, I walked into a restaurant yesterday that the person had called us multiple times on, and I looked at four different RPZs that were put in place. And just for reference, as you are aware of, Mr. Pyris, I have been certified in both serving and also testing of backflows. So in this one restaurant, the person is struggling. As you mentioned in your letter, you say that there's upper funding available for the utility to stay, yeah, sustainable, but you don't mention how this puts an added burden on the business at all. And when you walk into a place and there's a dishwasher, an industrial dishwasher, there's a ice maker, a Coca-Cola device that uses a handheld, and there's containment at the initial property line. And everything they were told was to put an RPZ on. It costs to the business of thirty-five hundred dollars to buy three units. They had one that already contained everything into the building, and it's just a restaurant. Now, you walk in, and most ice makers, if not all, have an air gap built into them, so the source can't touch the water. We went over this at the place of business that I have. So we forced someone to put something in there that even in the state regulation here, it says if there is no, if there's no hazard, can use a vacuum breaker, that's ninety-nine dollars, installed and never needs you to go back or the contractor to go back and test these units. So a ninety-nine-dollar device could have saved this person thirty-five hundred dollars. And there's three of them in there. It's ridiculous. And it's sad that somebody has to call me who has a hard time understanding English, who's trying to make a living, they're feeding their family, you walk in there, and the person is, "Look, there's no business here." He's doing the cooking and the serving at the same place, and we're saddling him with not only today's debt, but future debt. For a five-minute test, we're charging a hundred dollars each one, and we're forcing on the backbone of every single one, and we went over this at the place of my employment, that when you walked in and they did the same thing with the same company, Weston and Sampson, and then you went back and you called the state on us to see if it was okay, what I was saying to you. Vacuum breakers are absolutely okay for industrial dishwashers. They're absolutely okay for ice makers, and it's totally wrong on what we're doing to people. We're saddling small businesses with debt that they should not incur because we field on a system of putting together testing, and now we have to pay the pipe because we're outdoing it. And you know, the upper money to me should go to that business to replace the plumbing, to put it back to the way it should be, and it should put back in there, and somebody should do it on those vacuum breakers. There's no reason why. And I understand the point is that you can't test certain vacuum breakers. When was the last time in your career that you've seen one back siphonage in the Merrimack Valley, even in New England?
Back siphonage, I can't tell you. Back pressure, yes. We had two since I've been appointed as superintendent.
And did they hit the system, back into the water system?
No, the check valves did stop. It was, in this case, it was a dual-check valve, not an RPZ.
Yeah, and a dual-check valve is on the source. It's not on any of the appliances within the building?
It was...
Or fire service?
It was on the containment, where, the containment is where the meter is, just so everybody knows. But the state does mandate that we do put it in all different areas. We actually have to protect the last free-flowing tap. We can't allow that this place of business that is dealing with chemicals on one side of the building harmed the other people that are consuming the water on the opposite side of the building.
See, again, you went to the extreme example to get the gratification of that extreme example, which didn't exist in a lot of places that you're forcing these pieces into. You went totally to the extreme of chemicals and this and that. Sewer plants, we can absolutely see RPZs and air gaps. When we're talking to industrial dishwasher, and we're charging over a thousand dollars for one unit. One unit got put in, you had to call a plumber, you gotta get plumbing permits, you gotta get everything in between, and it seems like we just saddled these residents and business owners with this bill that should never have been there. And there's little to any oversight on this program. You had Weston and Sampson walk into my place of employment, they fielded multiple devices. When we had that discussion and went back over it, I was told that there was an ordinance by one of your employees that covered it, and the city's ordinance, all it references is back to the state regulations. And I would say to these eleven, the other ten counselors here, if you ever change that outside of the state, you're doing every small business a disjustice. It's not fear. These people work harder than we do. I get paid taxpayer money where I work. They get up every day, they go to work, and they don't know where their next meal's coming from. And it's not fear to watch this person run to the kitchen and back and forth. And I would ask that we would go back to these establishments and correct the wrongs and put back in, just because somebody has an opinion that a vacuum breaker doesn't work, it's an opinion, it's not a fact because it's in the state regulation that you can use it in certain circumstances, where we forced people to do RPZs, which is totally, totally irresponsible on the city's part. And I'm just gonna leave it at that because I was with Counselor Robinson when we looked at it, and I just think it's totally wrong to watch somebody waste their hard-earned money this way. And I thank you for everything you do, and I think that your intention is definitely to protect the consumer, but at the end of the day, we haven't had any in the city alone that have ever passed the containment area, the initial containment area, in any municipal building or private building in this city. And it hasn't happened since 1985 in all of New England. And it's right in the state regulations when you look at them. Thank you.
Counselor Rook?
Yeah, I'll just be much more general and quick, Counselor Gitcher. Be my expert on the subject, not me, but yes, we've done so much for businesses during COVID, this seems like a huge step backwards. So when the prices or the numbers were put in place, the charges, like, who came up with those? Who's, I, because I, there's some, you know, coffee shop owners or like small, small businesses, right? This was really gonna hurt. So I'm just, it seems like we've done so much on one side, but now, like, really sticking to them on this side.
Well, Mr. Pyris can...
I'm sorry.
Go, if you can.
Are we talking about the hundred-dollar charge?
Yeah, I mean, so each changeover is separate.
Correct. So the hundred-dollar charge has been in place, there's been two ordinance changes, as I can remember, one in 1988 and one in 2012. I know that the hundred-dollar charge was before the 2012. I don't know if it was established during the 1988, but that hundred-dollar charge is set forth by whoever the city council was at that time. We do not put those charges in place.
Yeah, well, let me, let me address, I think there's two, we're talking about two different things. One is the ordinance charge of a hundred dollars per unit. The other is if they're found that they need to change out the unit, then that's a cost. It doesn't come to the city or through the city, that, for instance, call a plumber or somebody to do that, so they'd have that cost, and they'd have the cost of whatever the unit replacement is. So that's not, we don't set those prices, Counselor, you know, that's kind of like consequence of that. And so, you know, this is something that, you know, Mr. Young started, and Mr. Pyris is, works for Mr. Young. But the, what precipitated it was DEP was out in talking to, looking at the water utility on a number of things, and talked about the low number that we had in the system, and that's where Sampson and Weston came in. So, so the cost to the, to the business, it's the ordinance fee, but it is per unit. So if someone had five units, it would be five hundred dollars, is my understanding.
Correct.
As far as ARPA, that was one of the things we, I believe it's in the proposed ARPA plan, and that is to make funds available to businesses who may have to change out things to be in compliance. And that's before the council. So that's not, that's not, that's for small businesses.
And so when the initial letter goes out, is there a timeframe you have to get it done by? Is there a deadline?
Usually there is. The state mandates that we give the customer fourteen days to get it repaired. We have since spoken with the state. They understand we just came out of a pandemic. They understand the financial hardship that everybody's going through. We just came out of winter, not very easy to get a plumber during that time. Also, plumbers are having a hard time locating some of these devices. The smaller ones you might find on the shelf, but some of the larger units, probably...
I guess my question is, you're working with, you know, pressing the fourteen days, you're working with...
Yeah, we are giving time extensions to anybody that gives us a call. We will work with them. We know the fourteen days there, but we are giving extensions, thirty days, forty-five days, just to work with the person, because we know fourteen days is very hard, especially coming out of pandemic.
And trying to get a plumber.
I'm sorry?
Trying to get a plumber as well, fourteen days. Good luck, right?
Exactly. And plumber getting the part. There's just so many things.
So there is some way of being given on that end. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson and Counselor Gitcher and Counselor Drinkwater?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One thing, I was called in to a business in my district. Clearly a language barrier. What are we doing to explain this to our business owners with a language barrier, for one? For two, this gentleman is working seven days a week with him and his wife, covers all bases of his restaurant. He went from paying two hundred dollars annually to eight hundred dollars annually. It's, it looks like he's ready to hang it up. We need to, I mean, and we look at the fee structure, at the very least, if we're gonna require the top tier of implementation on these regulations, and maybe in an instance where you have four units in your business, a hundred dollars for the first one, fifty dollars for the second one, and then everyone thereafter might be discounted.
That's certainly something the council has jurisdiction over, is looking at the ordinance. We could bring that forward, you know, because the council could entertain amending the ordinance, especially in light of COVID. The fee, that hundred-dollar fee is based on, and the ordinance has been around a long time, as Mr. Pyris says, but it's certainly, you know, completely within the council discretion to amend the ordinance in certain circumstances if they saw fit.
Thank you. Can I make the motion then to at least take a look at this ordinance? Maybe we, I don't know which subcommittee you'd recommend.
I would maybe suggest ask the Law Department to look at it and come back with a report. I mean, this is so old, we can go look and see. I think Mr. Pyris said there were two ordinances, so maybe get the Law Department to bring back a report for the subcommittee.
Okay, well then, through you, Mr. Mayor, to the solicitor, could you please take a look? a look at this, the fee structure, and kind of give us a report as to some options we might have as a council? Thank you.
Yeah, maybe we don't need that to be a motion, just bring back a report and put it on the city manager's agenda.
Yeah, we can certainly do that by way of a report.
Yeah, madam manager?
Yeah, and I did want to point out, and I think Mr. Pyris said this, we suspended temporarily continuing until there's more outreach and education. We too got calls from businesses, even businesses who were saying, gee, I got this notice, 14 days, I can't get a plumber in 14 days, I can't get a part in 14 days, and they were, you know, concerned about that. So Mr. Pyris has been working with DPD, putting together a presentation, we're gonna do it in multiple languages, so it's an educational outreach. DPD will be setting up Zooms with small businesses to go over all of this.
Thank you. And again, another suggestion to this whole piece is, when you're going out to these businesses and explaining to the business owners, because again, in the instance that I talk to the business owner, they probably can't get away from the business to attend something here at City Hall. So if you're gonna go out to the business, you might want to bring somebody that speaks the native language.
Well, we're gonna try and offer Zoom meetings too with businesses and so forth, but we'll work on that. But yes, there has to be a language component to the explanations and available resources.
Okay, thank you, because they found the gentleman at his place of work, so to ask him to leave the place of work, I don't think it's gonna happen.
Yeah, and I think one of the other difficulties is that the notices that were given, they give them pretty much to the landlord, and the landlord may not share that with the tenant, and then the tenant is caught by surprise.
Thank you.
Councillor Gitcher?
I probably wasn't as clear as what I'm trying to be, is that, and even through you to the manager, so that there's a clear understanding on what I'm trying to say, is that there's multiple options to have these businesses put in. And we're requiring the one that makes us go back and charge them $100 biannually, even though we could have them put in plumbing that costs $99 and a plumber to go in. So if there's options on there, that we should offer it to them, if it's a state regulation, the cheapest way to do it, without having to entertain more costs to the city or them or anybody. The initial backflow I was a part of back in the 90s, and the revision was in 2002. And the revision was made $100 because it was done all in-house, it was very, you know, tough to get surveys, and most of them, I think Mr. Pyris would agree, were just for the containment from the building back into the city's part of the line. So now when you go into these businesses, they have ice makers which have air gaps which don't require any kind of containment device. And in the beginning of this project, Weston and Sampson was told to put in RPZs even on those. So that was a $100 charge, even though you didn't even need any other device put on there. And my point is very straightforward, is that if whatever the least amount of containment within a building and the least expensive piece should be offered to these businesses, I'm not saying that they don't need the containment piece. What I'm saying is, we're forcing them to the expensive, to buy the expensive Cadillac to drive down the street rather than buy the Chevy. And that's what's happening, and there really is no, there's no hazard within that building. If pressure-reducing valves that are non-testable were such a hazard, they would not be on the state's list. They have the top engineers to look at this, and they look at it multiple times. So all I'm saying is, I think a directive from you would be to say, let's put the least expensive on these people.
Yeah, we don't disagree with that, councillor.
Well, we have, and that's the directive that was forced on people, we have.
It wasn't forced from-
Not from the manager's office, but from the water department, to the contractor. The contractor stated that as he was in my place of employment and fielded multiple devices on buildings that were less than 10 years old, and I said, wait a minute, all of these are contained, and there's no place that you want to have contamination contained than where I work. So I would say that, you know, all of it was put in place, it was done during a renovation project, and when we came back and said, look, here's the state rules, all we're saying is that they should be treated the same way, even though they don't have an expert in the building, they're cooks, they're people trying to make a living. And half of the, probably most of this city council has no idea what this discussion is about. And when you look at this containment stuff, and you look at it, and through you, madam manager, to Mr. Pyris, I think he would agree that there are cheaper ways of doing this that would contain it. And that's all we're saying, is give them the option for the cheaper way and let them put those-
And that's one of the reasons we suspended when this came to light, and also said, reach out, educate, work with the businesses, and to your point, you know, whatever can be done, and especially if there's already an existing system. I think you and I had a conversation about the air gap and so forth. If that's already existing and it is allowable, then why do they have to change it?
Exactly.
So those are, those are measures, and you know, if there are individual businesses who've been aggrieved, DPD will reach out, we know where they are, and we'll have them look at each one and see what happens.
Yeah, and I just think going forward, that if you recognize any, Mr. Pyris, that you at least reach out to those businesses and say, you know, we need to come back, and not retest you twice a year and make those people whole of not having that charge put on them, because it is a serious strain on their economic worth right now. And when you talk to a person, you just feel so bad for them that they're in this situation. And I think that that would be the right thing to do, is reach back out and look at your chats, because you know what you put them on. You know whether it's on an ice maker or not, you know whether it's on an industrial dishwasher or not, and you know, there is probably a lot of bills out there.
I think one of the points that Mr. Pyris makes in the report, though, in that what my understanding has precipitated this, is when DEP said the number that you have on the books in Lowell is extremely low, 600 or so for a city this size. So they, their point was, there are machines and devices that are not on the books, and how can you check? So that was part of it, to make sure the water system, that there is protection into, and now that has increased significantly, obviously.
That's been-
But it doesn't mean you have to do it in the most expensive way, but-
That's been in that report since 2004.
Councillor Gitcher, I'm sorry, I have to move the meeting forward if-
Can I finish my statement, please?
Just a quick one?
We have until 10 o'clock. I mean, every time someone goes to speak-
There are the councillors here waiting to make comments as well, councillor.
Every time we go to speak, it does the same thing.
Okay, councillor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate the motion that was made to revisit the fee structure going forward. I know there was a motion put on the floor, I don't know if that's in need of a second. If it is, I'll offer the second of that, just to get the report from the law department, if this council does want to revisit the fee ordinance. But I did just want to ask, you know, I feel the frustration of the businesses here. I know we all received outreach as they started to receive the letters and get the inspections and everything. Madam manager, you mentioned that in the draft ARPA proposal, there was a proposal to create a, you know, backflow preventer program that would reimburse businesses that either have incurred these costs already or will incur these costs. Given that there are a significant number that have incurred them already, you know, I know we're gonna go through a process of, you know, going out to the public and get the draft ARPA plan and getting public feedback. You know, I think this is one particular item within the draft ARPA plan that I would like to see the funds get out on the street as soon as possible, given that there are businesses that have, you know, spent up to, you know, thousands of dollars potentially already to address this. So I know the program will work in the form of reimbursement, I'm just hoping that that is one thing that we can get on the street as soon as possible. So I just want to ask, I don't know what would be needed, you know, from this council, if you need our authorization to, you know, go forward with this reimbursable program, but just kind of asking for guidance of if there's anything this council can do to move forward with those funds getting out on the street.
Madam Chair?
Thank you. I mean, the draft proposal is in subcommittee. If it was the wish of the council, we could bring forward a vote as to just that portion so that there is a fund established. We could do that, and that could always be replenished in the future, you know, as needed. So if that's the wish of the body, we could do that, if, I mean, assuming the subcommittee agrees to break that part out.
I mean, I don't know if the motion has to be made in subcommittee. I will make that in the form of a motion, if we can vote on that tonight, just so we can try to make sure we're moving this as soon as possible for the residents and businesses.
Sure, can you restate the motion again?
Motion to, for the council to approve the, I want to make sure I'm referencing the right program, but the $500,000 backflow preventer program that was proposed in the draft ARPA plan.
Seconded by councillor Leahy.
Roll call, please.
Roll call.
Matt Chow?
Yes.
Councillor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Councillor Gitcher?
Yes.
Councillor Janess?
Yes.
Councillor Leahy?
Yes.
Councillor Mercia?
Yes.
Councillor Noon?
Yes.
Councillor Robinson?
Yes.
Councillor Rook?
Yes.
Councillor Scott?
Yes.
Councillor Yehm?
Yes.
11 years.
Here are no other comments, go to B, motion response. Fire Department OT, funding update. Any comment? Councillor Gitcher?
First, I wanted to thank the manager and the fire chief for keeping the stations open during, the companies opened till the end of the fiscal year, but through you, madam manager, is the fire chief here by any chance?
Yes.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief. I just have a couple of quick questions. You know, I thank you for coming back and keeping all the companies open until the end of the fiscal year. I think it's extremely important when we look at the Mod Street fire and also the Wilder Street one, and I think the response is, you know, if engine two was, ladder two was closed that day, Mod Street may have been a much different scene than what we had. And I think that when we start gambling on, not gambling, but you know, closing companies, it becomes an issue on, you know, where are we at the time? So when you look at your budget, is there funding in line items that is left over that could maybe go towards equipment repair? Because as we saw right after the Mod Street one, we also had the ladder truck get damaged, and there were other probably pieces of equipment, and I'm sure there are that need to be repaired very soon, and we're always scratching and kicking for those dollars. And I'm just wondering, if you see any line items that are going over in also, you know, building next year's budget, will you be putting forth line items to cover so there are no closings for next year's budget and presenting them in a FY23 budget so that we at least try not to have any company closing?
Thank you for the question, councillor. We have identified up to about $194,000 from areas of salaries and wages, based on the fact that we are short personnel as of right now. The department has 203 personnel, and very shortly will be down to about 200. It is listed as 213 as a result. It requires more overtime money to keep those companies in service. We do believe that left over in the fire department account, approximately $1.03 million, that we have enough money, keeping all of the companies open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, for the rest of the fiscal quarter, that we can maintain that.
That $193,000 that you speak of, I wonder, through you, Mayor Chow, CFO Baldwin, or to the manager, can those be line itemed out of personnel and get over to the expense side of the budget so that they could use those to repair trucks? And I'm sure the gas bills must be out of sight also, but I'm just wondering if we can take the personnel money and transfer it over to the expense account so that we could actually do more repairs in those fire trucks? Because right now, the least amount of time that those trucks are down, and if that projection is accurate, as the fire chief says, is $193,000 there. If we can get it transferred over sooner rather than later, because the end of the fiscal year closes out very fast, and if those, if they don't get worked on during this fiscal year, those funds would be expended in next fiscal year. So I'm just trying to see if those funds could be transferred over to get that work done during this fiscal year and put into purchase orders that way so that they can get done.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That kind of a transfer would require a vote of the city council, however it is possible. And it is something in the third quarter of the fiscal year that typically the administration is working with department heads on, to encumber any funds in advance of the hard close for purchase orders for the fiscal year.
Could we make an exception and try to do that as soon as possible so that we could get these funds transferred over, so that we can get these pieces of equipment up and running, or whatever the deficiencies are in some of the pieces of equipment, we could get moving earlier rather than later than wait till the full thing is actually closed? If you agree that that balances out, whatever number that is, bring it back to this body so that we could actually vote and get these repairs done as soon as possible. I think it's important that we have these pieces of equipment up and running, especially where we've seen some of the latest tragedies.
Any other comments? Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to ask the chief. So budget season's coming up. I'm aware that we're at the, you said about 203 for staffing levels? We're slated for 213, correct?
That is correct, councillor.
And as a result of the state vaccine requirement, it kind of hindered the ability to train on the state-run, state-run, you know-
Fire academy?
Fire academy, correct? So that puts a delay on onboarding potential firefighters, correct?
Yes, it does, yes.
What can we, as a city, do to kind of put a priority on the onboarding process, as fast as reasonably possible, working with the academy? But, I mean, just based on timeline, if we're waiting for, say, eight firefighters to go through the academy, come out, start our onboarding process, there generally seems to be laps from the time that we bring them on to when we send people off to the next academy. Is that something we, as a council and as an administration, could kind of make a commitment to, to try to prioritize sending off people to the academy so we can get to that 213 number? Because in the meantime, if we're at 203 now, we get eight out of the academy, say, this fall, there's gonna be potential retirements and everything else in between, so that 203 number could be well below 200.
Well, obviously, the council has, and we have budgeted for all 213 officers, so that's the main thing, that the money is in the budget for all 213. As a practical matter, the chief has to get them into an academy, go through the list, go through the civil service, so that's a process. The chief has been aggressively trying to do that as quickly as possible, but there are certain limitations, you know, in terms of trying to get that done. But the council has done exactly what, you know, what you're saying, and that is support 213 in the budget process.
Oh, and I'm not questioning the funding mechanism of it. I'm just, I'm speaking more so the process of the academy, come out, hire, go to academy, so we have a supply of ready, willing, and trained firefighters.
So right now, we have seven firefighters going through the hiring process, one of which is coming from an area department, and that individual is already academy-trained. So we'll be looking to try to get them on by the first of June. Chances are high we're gonna lose about eight over the course of, at least out till August, September of this year, and I'm only putting seven on. The real problem is that the classes that used to be 36 and 40 at the fire academy only have 24 now. That's based on their inability to staff the classes for a larger volume of candidates. And because of that, spots offered for the new candidates from Lowell, they go out depending on which campus of the state fire academy you go to, all the way up until November. So there's a very high chance that those six individuals that are basically cleared through our process and ready to go to the academy, may not be on a fire truck until after the turn of the year. So there are a couple of options in relation to that, which we've begun exploring. Number one is, we have several groups of hiring in process at any one time. For example, we begin another process of eight more individuals within about a three-month timeframe, with the plan that those individuals would see the fire academy in February and March, allowing them to be on trucks by May, beginning of the June timeframe, and keep hiring in series so that we always have candidates ready to go. We also have written a grant for funding for four individuals, a safer grant, that we should hear about at the end of August and the beginning of September, which again is another round of potential hiring. And the hope is that as we approach the end of the year, more staff will be brought on through the fire academy, and we'll be looking at slightly larger class sizes. and we'll be looking at slightly larger class sizes. There is also the alternative of conducting our own in-house training academy, uh, certifying people firefighter one and two. And we've already reached out to numerous departments, including, uh, initially Brockton. It is my intention to also reach out to Worcester and Boston. They are running their own academies and certifying their firefighters one and two, uh, certification. Um, so that is an option for us, although we're still exploring what the financial commitment would be, what the legal ramifications of that are. And also what we would need to do as far as the instruction and facilities process. So for example, we don't have a building in Lowell that we would do the burning training in. We'd have to have some sort of MOU with either the state or another fire department that operates a building that would be, um, suitable for that type of training.
Thank you, Mi- very much, Chief.
Council Noon and Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief, for being here. And wanna thank you and your department for the work you've done. This council has been, you know, really proactive in term of keeping, want to keep all the company, fire company, open day and night. Doing so, uh, really this year, two point six million dollar as opposed to the last, say, two thousand and sixteen and twenty, less than a million dollar. I'm concerned, uh, coming to the next budget, we will have to raise taxes if we're going to continue to do this. So my question is that, what are some of the steps that you can tell us in term of to manage the overtime better?
So the key to keeping the overtime down is personnel, hands down. Uh, we need new firefighters in positions on all the trucks. And right now, we are unstrength. So if we are able to accelerate that hiring process and getting them through to training, I'm unwilling to accept the situation where we are not training firefighters before we're placing them on the truck. In fact, it's one of the conditions for their employment that they get firefighter one and two. The profession is way too dangerous. And as we've seen in many of the most recent fires that we've had, it requires a level of proficiency and professionalism and ability that only comes with training and certification. So the key to keeping those overtime costs down will be getting the most amount of personnel, the closest we can get to two hundred and thirteen, so that we can drop the money down. That being said, in order to keep all the firehouses open, I think that the days of eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars are gone. Okay? Um, a great many things have happened, both in contract negotiations, uh, since that time. Uh, we're, you're referencing two thousand and sixteen, it's two thousand and twenty-two. And, um, you know, we, we had to get to the end of this year, we needed two point six million dollars. Um, if, if we were to look into FY twenty-three, uh, we'd have to look at at least that. Until I can get the numbers up to two hundred and thirteen, at which point we can begin to bring it back down.
Chief, you list, you list some of the option in term of, you know, recruiting. One of the option I heard was in-house academy. I'm sure there's other cities in town in the Commonwealth that have in-house academy, is that?
Yes.
Um, so, um, you also mentioned that, you know, we don't have a certain thing we can learn from them, of course, in term of the, um, you know, training in how to provide training and the right wage of training and stuff. Can we learn from them? Can we maybe, this is one of the additional option that you mentioned in term of getting more staff, um, as be- as fast as possible. You, right now, what we see is that we're short of ten firefighter. But going the next couple of months, or maybe so, um, that it's gonna be more firefighter that retire. So now we have, like, a problem, continue, it's not stopping.
Yes. Yes.
So I would suggest one of the things you do, um, maybe, Chief, is that maybe reach out to other fire, uh, other cities in town and to look at where to do, uh, in-house academy. So we can up our staffing as fast as possible.
Yes, Counsel.
Thank, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Council Janess?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, through you to the chief. Uh, thanks for being here, Chief, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I wanted to ask about the State Fire Academy that you mentioned, um, and the trouble they're having with instructors and the ability to, to staff their classes. You may not be able to answer this, um, do you know if that's a funding problem for them? Is that a staffing problem at that level?
My discussions, initial discussions in an attempt to try to establish what spots were going to be available for our candidates were that they were unable to staff enough instructors to go higher than the level of twenty-four. And that, that was what it was going to be for the foreseeable future.
Okay. I'm wondering if we can maybe reach out to our state delegation to get their understanding of it, to see if there's anything that can be done at the legislature level in order to help move that along and help that staffing level to possibly open that bottleneck up for us and the other communities that rely on these, these training programs.
Madam Manager?
Uh, you know, we could certainly, um, ask them to, to look into it and investigate, um, whether it is, whether there's, there's an opportunity from the legislature to fund more. I'm not a- aware, um, but we could ask, certainly ask them. You know, and what we also did experience, which we, we've seen the, you know, cumulative effect, and that was during the height of COVID, there just weren't, you know, uh, enough seats. In some, at some point, when Chief Winwood was here, if any, for people to be in the academy because, because of COVID. So that, that set us behind as well, uh, in every community, actually. So everybody's fighting to get into academies now.
I would like to make a motion that we put together a letter to our state delegation, asking them to explore ways to increase funding for the State Fire Academy.
Motion by Council Janess, second by Council Getchia. On the face of the eye, post say no to ice covered, motions carry. You done, Counselor?
Thank you. One other question, which is just that two hundred and thirteen FTE level that we've discussed, in a perfect world, we were able to get there. Where does that put us in terms of the ability to staff all of our companies so that we don't need to close things? Assuming all two hundred and thirteen firefighters are onboard, everyone's healthy, everyone is, um, you know, working their normal hours through the year. Obviously, there's vacations and stuff like that that will eat into that, but are we, you know, on target with that? Are we short? Are we high?
Do you mean, are we going to be on target as far as the extra overtime money that'll be associated with it, Counselor?
No, my question is, if we had two hundred and thirteen employees, does that satisfy the need in terms of being able to keep the companies open?
I believe it does, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all. Thank you.
Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, um, wanna thank the, the members of the department and you, Chief, for, um, your, your work, um, every day and, and certainly to keep as many companies open as possible. Um, you know, i- it does seem from the information, um, that you've provided tonight that, um, you know, it's a battle with attrition. And, you know, as, as many, um, new, uh, members of the department that we can get on trucks, we're, we're constantly trying to keep up, uh, with, with retirements and, and things like that. So, um, I understand how, how difficult the, uh, the staffing situation i- is going to be for a period of time. And I just wanna say, you know, I think, um, y- you know, the, the, this council over the last year has, um, made a significant, uh, investment in the overtime account, which I fully support. And, um, I'm glad that the commitment is there, um, to, to maintain keeping the companies open through the end of the fiscal year. But we're coming up to a new fiscal year. And, you know, I think it's important to, to look at this and, and as we, you know, approach the next budget. You know, I just wanna express that I, I think it's just important that this council maintains that investment. As Council Noon mentioned, you know, that, um, it does have an impact on the taxpayer. But I haven't, uh, received a single piece of negative feedback from a taxpayer that we are, uh, putting too much money into public safety by way of keeping our, our fire companies open. So, you know, I think this is an investment that's important to the council, it's important to the public. And as we approach a new budget year, I know, um, you know, we're working hard, uh, we have been working hard, uh, to maintain our staffing, we've had the problems with the Fire Academy. And, you know, again, like I said, it's a, it's a battle of attrition. But, um, as we do, you know, um, address the, the staffing issue and look into potentially an in-house training academy, I think these are all good ideas. Um, you know, just wanna say that I, I think it's important that, uh, in, in the interim, uh, we make the investments and we're honest with the taxpayer. That, um, a- as you said, Chief, the, the days of, you know, eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, in the overtime account may be over. And I think it's just, we have to be direct and honest, um, with the residents of Lowell, that this is an important investment that we wanna make and, you know, for their public safety. So, um, I, I thank, um, you know, I, I thank you, Chief, for being here and for the work that you're, you're doing. And, you know, look forward to, uh, continue this work to keep the companies open. So thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other comments? If there are no other comments, I just wanna make a quick comment up here, uh, Chief. This is the first time I've seen you send us the fire on Mod Street. I wanna thank you and all the firefighters that worked so heroically on that day to save that, that many lives. And also, I understand that there was a fire yesterday in Walker Street, and one of the firefighters was injured and transported to the hospital. How is he or she doing?
Uh, she's doing good. She was evaluated and released right now. She's currently on injury. She had a fall from the top of a fire apparatus.
Thank you. Let us know, let her know that our thoughts and prayers are with her to recover as soon as possible.
Thank you.
If there are no other comments, we will now move to, uh, four point two informational reports. Uh, we have C, D, and E. If everyone in the audience in the back there from the Sustainability Council, um, I, you know, you are number E, the third one. If, um, I'd like to ask for a motion to take E out of order by Council Mercia, second by, uh, Council Robinson. Motion, uh, motion passes. E informational letter from Lowell Sustainability Council through Madam Manager to Jay Mason and, uh, Sustainability Council members. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mason.
Just trying to get this, uh, turned on. I don't see it on the monitors. We have a slideshow. My name is Jay Mason. I'm the chair of the Sustainability Council. We have a five-minute letter presentation and a request for you tonight. I'd like to point out that there are eight of the nine council members here with me tonight. Our ninth member had a work commitment. So I wanna just point out, these are dedicated folks, and we are serious about our, our intent. Environmental sustainability is responsib- responsibly interacting with the planet to maintain a natural balance and avoid doing damage. Future generations are depending on us to get this right. Whether we like it or not, our community is being changed by climate crisis. The Sustainability Council's mission is to propose sustainable policies and encourage innovative solutions. We are here to provide a way forward in this complex time. We wanna help.
So for the past thirteen years, the Lowell Sustainability Council has been helping the city of Lowell meet the social, environmental, and economic challenges brought by climate change. In the past, we've made recommendations. We have held summits to educate the public, and we have participated in outreach programs like the Electric Car Day, Solarize Lowell, as well as Lowell's Curbside Recycling Program. And going forward, we hope to do more. The challenges that we face are unprecedented. With the release of each new climate study, we learned that the effects of climate change are even more damaging than the scientists predicted. And we are already seeing those effects. California wildfires are so extensive, were so extensive last year that we could see smoke from Christian Hill. Recent circumstances like the flooding in Centerville, in Pawtucketville in November, and heat waves in August have adversely affected Lowell residents. The city of Lowell has opportunities ahead to be a real leader in addressing the climate change and environmental justice crises. We want to first bring up some urgent opportunities pertaining to energy efficiency and transportation. We wanna bring them to your attention in hopes that we can help the city act, and also to serve as a resource to the city council. And we will continue by briefly, um, speaking about some of these initiatives.
So, um, energy efficiency has been called by many in the fight for climate change or climate justice. Energy efficiency has been called by many in the fight for climate justice, the fast fuel in the path to carbon-free buildings. It is not only effective at reducing greenhouse gas emissions, but also reduces energy burdens that low and moderate-income residents face, which are an impediment to social and economic empowerment. Lowell's poverty rate is nearly twice that of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. More than fifty percent of residents of Lowell are renters, and many are language-isolated. As the state of Massachusetts becomes more aggressive with decarbonization strategies, the city of Lowell cannot afford to do nothing. It will have failed its residents if the already disenfranchised residents are hit by high gas bills as wealthier towns embrace electrification. Failing to do something about this fast approaching reality will be unjust. We ask that the city council make it a priority to improve energy efficiency in the city. And just to really bring it down to a place where we all understand the issues that we're talking about, that they matter and they actually matter for this city. For every dollar I, as a resident of Lowell, has invested in mass save, our city has gotten back less than fifty-nine cents, while places like Andover have gotten more than one dollar and eighty cents. It's a high time we became totally responsible and served our residents fairly and in a just manner. Thank you.
The transportation sector is now the leading source of greenhouse gas emissions, over forty percent in Massachusetts, and the largest contributor to air pollution that is, that especially affects the very high number of people with asthma and other respiratory illnesses in Lowell. We realize that this will take time and resources, but federal and state funding opportunities are becoming increasingly available to cities like, cities like ours. We encourage action in these four areas. Invest in and improve public transportation. This includes the purchase of electric buses. Enhance pedestrian and bike mobility in the city. Electrify municipal fleets and, where possible, due to contracts, school buses. And add charging infrastructure in convenient and visible areas.
In addition to energy efficiency and transportation on the Sustainability Council, has other current and past initiatives. The Road to One Hundred by Twenty Thirty-five Recycling Subcommittee, Heat Island Study. Um, we do have a link available for that. Uh, communications via website, uh, and Facebook. A community choice aggregation with forty-five percent additional renewable energy over state mandate. Solar on the high school and solarized Lowell and heat pumps.
We cannot always rely on the state or federal government to protect the city of Lowell from the effects of climate change. The city must take action to protect its own future. In two thousand and seventeen, this city made a unanimous groundbreaking commitment to reduce fossil fuel reliance to a hundred percent clean energy by two thousand and thirty-five. While this city has made some good progress towards that goal, Lowell will need to redouble its efforts if the city hopes to achieve its ambitious goal of one hundred percent renewable by two thousand and thirty-five. Lowell is not alone in this. The city should continue to partner with UMass Lowell and other organizations to achieve our common goals. The Lowell Sustainability Council is here to help. As a consistently meeting group of ten motivated members, we look forward to working with the city council in the new year to help its, navigate the important decisions that lie ahead. We hope that decades from now, you will look back on this, on the decisions made during your tenure as the tough, your tenure as the tough but necessary actions that ensured both the safety and prosperity of Lowell. Thank you.
That's all we have. Any questions we'd like to answer?
Any comments? Counsel Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. And again, we've been discussing some of these. I know the council has been advocating for installations and looking into the electric charging stations, options in that area. We are currently looking to move forward and work with the community on the solar projects and identifying locations throughout the community that would be great locations. And I appreciate you coming and speaking in front of the council in regards to the solar projects as well. And I personally enjoy hearing about this because we need a reminder. We need to be mindful of what kind of improvements can we make and then a little bit over a long time ends up being large improvements. And I think these kind of commitments pay dividends. So, thank you very much.
Counsel Nune, and then Counsel Janess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jay and the rest of the Sustainability Council, thank you for your time. You have our attention, and we will continue to work with you to make our city a livable city.
Counsel Janess, and then Counsel Leahy, and then Counsel Kishia and Counsel Drinkwater.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, through you to the Sustainability Council, thank you all for being here tonight. Thank you for this letter and the support and all your work you're doing within the city. I would like to make a motion to refer this report specifically to the Transportation Subcommittee for further discussions on what can be done with the statement of transportation being the largest impact on climate change. I think it's important that the Transportation Subcommittee begin discussions on what we can do as a city to reduce our impact.
Second.
Motion by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Nune, motion passes. Counsel Janess, are you done?
I'm done. Thank you very much.
Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the Sustainability Council for coming down, giving us this information. Thank you for the presentation, and we will continue to work for you and work with you to reach these goals. And thank you for your efforts in this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counsel Kishia?
Thank you, Mayor Chow. Through you to Mr. Mason. How would you rate the city on Sustainable Lowell 2025 that was endorsed by the council back in 2013? I know there were eight goals that were put forth. I just wonder where we actually are on it and how your council would rate the city on its progress towards that 2025 goal of Sustainable Lowell that was put forth back in 2013 and the energies put forth by council at that time. I'd just like to hear your thoughts on that and if there's ways that we can do better.
We've got a lot of work to do. That's why we're here. We recently had a report presented to us from the energy manager, and the results are not, let's say they're not overwhelming. We have a lot of greenhouse gas emission work to do. We've got a lot of work to do with weatherization especially. We can't expect to realize any efficiencies in heating systems if we're blowing that heat and energy through buildings that are not properly weatherized. So, we've got an enormous amount of work on weatherization as well as transportation to do. And we appreciate your hearing us out, and we look forward to working hard to make some more progress because we are not where we need to be for 2035, certainly.
I guess, being a new member to the council, and I haven't seen anything shared till tonight from your council, and I want to thank you for all the hard work you're doing because I think it matters more than people realize in the future. But I wonder, do you guys put information forward to the council regularly on where we can do better at supporting those goals or how we could manage some of those goals going forward?
This is our first step forward to being more proactive in that regard. We recently were here with the Community Choice Aggregation. We worked very proactively on getting that to be re-approved. It was a little bit difficult because we didn't have the numbers working in our favor this time. And the council had the foresight to go along with that, and we very much appreciate that. But we need to do more. We need to be more present and more active in pushing on this. It matters to all of us. It matters to our kids. So, very happy to take the mantle and work together.
I just wanted to thank you through the mayor and the whole council for all the hard work you're doing. It's definitely not going unnoticed, and thank you.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to thank the members of the Sustainability Council for their work, and particularly on the issue that Mr. Mason just mentioned, the recent re-upping of our Community Choice Aggregation Agreement for Electricity that makes Lowell one of the state leaders, right at the very top in terms of communities that are including clean energy well over half and forty-five percent above the state requirement for clean energy in our city's portfolio. So, I think it's important to note that the city is a leader in that regard. Obviously, a lot more work to do, and the Sustainability Council will continue to bring forward recommendations, which we appreciate. But I think it's important to recognize the leadership role we have taken and to specifically thank the Sustainability Council and, you know, the individual members for educating the members of this council on that program. You know, I was one of the members of the Environment Energy Subcommittee that had a lot of discussion on the Community Choice Aggregation Program last year, last summer, as we were nearing the end of the agreement. And I know I personally really relied upon the expertise of, you know, Mr. Mason and others to really educate me on that issue and the importance of a really, you know, complex program. So, I want to thank you and look forward to moving along and, you know, in consideration of these recommendations and others. So, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, the Sustainability Council and the members who were here tonight. If I may ask, in addition to your have report, if you could give us a ranking in the area of that city need improvement as far as the clean energy to meet the, you know, to meet the deadline, I mean, to meet the goal of 2035. So, for example, if, you know, you talked about the weatherization, the transportations and the recycling, you know, ranking where are we at, you know, as a city. So, when we implemented our vote to implement certain program, we keep that in mind to increase that goal of to be one hundred percent, you know, and to meet the goal in the year of 2035. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hope you know what I'm talking about, right?
Yes. In terms of a ranking, I'd be putting myself on the spot to give the data that we don't have enough real backup information to give you an exact number. But if we're trying to be at one hundred percent by 2035, that's in, what, seventeen years? And we are now probably maybe on an average, depending on whether you're looking at municipal or private individuals, we're probably... Mary, do you know the answer?
Well, I happen to serve at the Massachusetts Energy Efficiency Advisory Council and at the Massachusetts Energy Equity Working Group. And the picture is not rosy. It's, I'll be honest with you, we are doing terribly, you know. You'd ask, you know, why terribly? We have a lot of renters in the city of Lowell. People who live in rental apartments, like me, consume, energy use is very intensive in small spaces. So, we have renters, we have a lot of poverty, we have a lot of old buildings, we have a lot of language-isolated residents. So, Lowell has done well when it comes to municipal buildings. Great. But, you know, the Lowell residents don't live in municipal buildings. They live in buildings outside. And so, that's where the city of Lowell needs to become proactive, maybe like cities like Boston, Cambridge, Newton, and even think about an ordinance, maybe, on building consumption of energy. Because if we do not know how much our buildings are consuming, then we will not be able to craft a very, we'll not be able to hit our targets, you know. You have to know, how much are you consuming? So that you can say, okay, then this is going to be the target for me to get to a carbon-free building. So, we've done great things, but they are at the municipal level. But when it comes to ordinary Lowell residents, we are doing terribly. Thank you.
By the way, the council has a copy of that Boston ordinance, and we're looking at it. And we'd like to talk more about that at another more appropriate time. Thank you.
I'd like to add one more comment, which is that in addition to this great challenge that we have specifically for our city, and it's this demographic, we also have the University of Massachusetts at Lowell, which has been ranked number one in Massachusetts by the advancement of, for the advancement of sustainability in higher education, above Harvard, above MIT. We have a scientist on campus who is a lead author for the International Panel of Climate Change Report. So, we have a wealth of resources that are right here at the institution within the city. I know before we had the Great Community Partnership, which was up and running. The pandemic, you know, slowed that down a little bit. But I wanted to, if folks weren't aware, perhaps the branding at UMass Lowell could be a little bit more clear about what exactly we have here. We have a whole wealth of expertise and action across sciences and the social sciences on campus that's available as well. So, I'll end it there.
Any other comments? If not, I want to thank, any other comments? If not, I would like to thank Jay and the entire council members for coming here to make your presentation. It's very, very helpful. And I heard you mention that one of the activities coming up soon is the low-drive electric vehicles. That's one of the more fun ones. So, thank you for all the great work you do, and thank you for being here today. We now go to 4.2 Part C informational fiscal year 2023 budget update. Madam Manager?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the council, the Chief Financial Officer, Connor Baldwin, has put together a summary, an update, if you will, as to where we stand for the FY23 budget update. And so, if there's no objection, I'll just ask Mr. Baldwin to briefly explain that to the council and to the listening audience as to where we stand at this point in the year.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Madam Manager. I'll be brief. But included in your packet this evening is a memorandum, as the manager mentioned, an update on where we're at in the budget process. Also enclosed is a copy of the most recently updated forecast for the major operating funds, the general fund, as well as the city's enterprise funds for parking, sewer, and water. The budget season began formally on January 18th. Budget instructions were distributed to department heads. And since that time, we've been following our normal course of business in assembling the budget. As I mentioned, the timeline is included in the memorandum. We are current, we have received all of the submissions from the departments early in February and are currently analyzing those preliminary results are included in the memorandum. We do intend to bring the FY2023 operating and capital budgets before the city council on May 24th, to be referred to a public hearing for consideration. A couple of notable items within, as noted in the memorandum, are about our challenges, which are not unlike the challenges year-to-year for the city of Lowell. And in an operating budget to the tune of $464 million last year, those challenges have to do mainly with our fixed costs. So, some of those drivers are the pension assessment, which increased this year by 1.6 million. The health insurance premiums for the group insurance commission on average will increase by 6.2%. And then charter schools, which have for many years been a challenge for the city, as the charter school has expanded grades, our assessment for next year in the preliminary state budget is an increase of $4.8 million. Other costs, including the personnel costs associated with the most recent MOU, and then solid waste and recycling and the assessment for the Greater Lowell Vocational School, together make about another million dollars increase. So, to put that in perspective, each one percent increase in the tax levy represents about $1.5 million in revenue. So, with all of the requests from the departments in, that puts us about $10 million off. That's the deficit we're working on now. However, we are confident we will bring before the council in May a balanced budget in accordance with the law. And I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have or discuss this further at the subcommittee level.
Madam Manager?
Thank you. And also in the memo is just an update as to what we can expect, at least from the governor's budget, what the governor put forward. Now, obviously, as the council knows, there's a larger process. The House of Representatives has their budget in next month, and then after that, the Senate. And then there's a reconciliation or, you know, committee that will reconcile the budget later in the summer, probably in June or July, hopefully by July. But you can see that the Chapter 70 increase was significant because the legislature, or at least the legislature and the governor, had committed to fully funding Student Opportunity Act, which yields the city of Lowell, the schools, Chapter 70, an additional $22.4 million. When it comes to local aid or unrestricted government general that the seaside of the budget gets, that's, I don't want to seem ungrateful, but that's a 2.7%, and that's $747,000 increase. So, there's a big difference, obviously, and that's not unusual. It's just, those are the facts. Now, those numbers may change, you know, when it goes through the legislature and the House and the Senate may add or subtract. But that's what, at least, the governor's proposal as far as expected local aid increases for the city of Lowell.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Madam Superintendent. Is there any indication right now from the governor's budget about fully funding charter schools, the charter school commitment?
We haven't seen that in the governor's budget. I mean, that was a commitment that was made a while ago, especially in conjunction with the Student Opportunity Act, but we haven't seen it.
Is there any idea right now what percentage they're looking to fund or anything at this point? Are we just not?
Well, right now, we know there's almost a $5 million assessment to us. You know, I'm not sure when it goes through the House and the Senate whether there will be, there usually is a push to fully fund charter school reimbursement. It doesn't, it hasn't happened, but, you know, there's hope. There's new, you know, there's a lot of tax collection revenue in the state this year. Maybe this will be the year that they do it. It would be very helpful to a city like Lowell to have the charter school funding fully funded.
Right. And it was a commitment that had been made to the cities and towns that have never been capped?
Almost made, but not funded.
And is that anything that we, as a council, should put anything forward or anything? I don't know if it's ever helped.
Yeah, no, I mean, I think, again, like a communication to, you know, to the three-legged stool, both the governor, the Senate, and the House at budget time, they do get a lot of communications, but just imploring that they fully fund charter school reimbursement, it makes a big difference for the gateway cities.
Right. And there's so many, that was what I was going to say, there's so many of the charter schools that are located in gateway cities. It seems like a disproportionate burden on cities that is not necessarily felt by towns. So, thank you.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, it seems to have become an annual rite of spring and budget season to point out that the increase in the charter school assessment year-over-year is just an absolute backbreaker to the budget. $4.8 million this year, and it's just important to point out, this isn't just like a single-year aberration. It was the same increase last year. So, we're talking, you know, and I know it's been to that similar level for year-over-year. So, just in the past couple of years, we're looking at close to $10 million cumulatively. It's, you know, of the fixed costs, it's just, it's something that has to be addressed. And I add my voice to the chorus that, you know, we certainly need, you know, full reimbursement from the state. Question on that topic, though, through you, Mr. Mayor, to either Madam Manager or Mr. Baldwin? or Mr. Baldwin, that the Chapter 70 increase, which is substantial and some good news, is that reflective of the increase, the increase in charter school reimbursements that I believe was part of the Student Opportunity Act? I know it doesn't come close to full reimbursement, but it, I believe that increase in Chapter 70 may be reflective of at least an increase in the commitment from, from the legislature to, to the charter reimbursement.
Mr. Baldwin?
So it's not include, in the number we quoted, the 22 million, that is exclusive of charter schools. So there was a initiative in the Student Opportunity Act to also fully fund the charter schools and to put money towards that. However, that, that's a separate funding line of the state budget.
So do we know in the governor's budget whether there was any increase in, in that line from, from last year?
Yes, there was. And so the increase in the proposal from the governor, H2, is about a $3 million increase to the charter school reimbursement. However, we'll see how that holds throughout the, the process.
So while we may not be able to, but we can certainly advocate for full reimbursement, there is at least the possibility that the, the line in the budget that, that addresses charter school reimbursement could be increased when the House and the Senate take up their versions?
It certainly could, and if I could just draw a comparison, that, that number in the reimbursement side's about, about $9 million in the governor's budget. The assessment is, is about $37 million. So it doesn't, I, I think that's the point that Counselor Scott was-
I'm saying, it will never be commensurate, or we certainly hope at some point it will be, I know it doesn't come close in any recent budget to being commensurate with the expenses on, on the city side. But I know through the Student Opportunity Act, there was, you know, an effort made to, to at least make some progress in that, that regard. So certainly believe, you know, anything we can do to advocate for is really important. I did just also want to ask a question. Obviously, the $10 million gap that's referenced in here is, you know, a significant concern. I know in past years, and, you know, we have, the next item on the agenda will, will address, you know, recommended appropriation into reserves from the free cash certification. I know in past budgets, we've used reserves to be able to pass a balanced budget at the beginning of the year and have been able to replenish those reserves through, usually through free cash certification. Seems like it'll be important in order to create a balanced budget to dip into reserves once again, which I think is a prudent decision. But I do just want to say, you know, as you stated, Mr. Baldwin, that there will be a balanced budget presented to the council. I hope that it can be balanced without cuts to services. And I know it was referenced in here, you know, we may need to revisit the, the city's appropriation to the school department. I really hope that one won't do receive a budget that, you know, if it takes, you know, some additional use of reserves, which, you know, the, the account has been built up significantly thanks to, you know, the, the financial policy of the city. But, you know, this memo does address the potential need for cuts to present a balanced budget. I'm hoping that, you know, through the, the House and Senate versions of the budget, we can increase, you know, some of the, the funding we'll receive from the state. I'm hoping that we can use, you know, the significant reserves that we've built up to be able to balance budget without having to rely, you know, on any kind of, you know, cuts to service or, or hopefully to the, the school appropriation. So just wanted to, you know, add those, those comments. You know, I know you're working hard to be able to, we need to, you know, put the budget in balance, and you're working hard to do that. But, you know, hopefully through the budget process and the legislature, you know, we can do so without having to, you know, make any, any cuts that'll impact residents. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Gishia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Connor. Connor, in the enterprise funds for the sewer in the water, and you look at the local revenues there going up, is that due to rate increases or usage increase projected in future out years?
So in, in both of the forecasts, and this is highlighted at the bottom of each one of the forecasts, if any of the folks want to follow along at home, we are projecting a rate increase in both of the enterprise funds for water and sewer. The amount will have to be a result of further discussion, and that would come by ordinance along with the budget process. It's also worth noting along that point, Counselor, that these assumptions in the forecast assume the appropriation that's later on the agenda, which is appropriating a portion of free cash into the enterprise funds to replace lost revenue. That will help us mitigate any future rate increases, but there are, for each one of them, assumed rate increases in the forecast.
My, my only other question to it is, when you look at, on the sewer enterprise, you see Tucksbury, Draken, and Tings were in the out years, they're decreasing their number of payments. Do we have contracts currently with them? And if so, are they going to also increase as, as we are? I just see the out years, is it, they're dropping off where, where challenge fit is actually projected to arise, that's all.
Those amounts, Mr. Mayor-
Mr. Baldwin?
Those amounts for the out years for the towns are a result of the intermunicipal agreements with the towns for the use of sewer, which is based on a formula that's pretty detailed. And we've been going through an exercise of recalibrating based on the IMI, the allocations for the towns. And the short version of the story is, because it's based on the amount of debt, we incur capital costs. When those, when the debt service is paid off on some of the capital, depending on what type of infrastructure work it is, whether it's combined sewer work, or whether it's for the local distribution system, we can allocate those differently to the towns. And so this assumption is based on some of that debt being paid off in the future.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you and managers. Mr. Baldwin, on the expenses size, on the spending size regarding the health insurance and the dental, do we, as a city, put out an IRP getting the bid from different companies that providing health insurance so that we pick the one that is, you know, cheaper with the most coverage? Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin?
The city is part of the Group Insurance Commission, the GIC, with the state. And so we negotiate every, every several years with the PEC for continuation, but we're bound by the rates that the GIC, which does publicly advertise their, their, the companies that they participate in the health insurance, but we're part of the Group Insurance Commission, and, and those are the rates.
Thank you.
No other comments? We'll go to D, informational free cash certification and explanation. Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, CFO Baldwin has prepared a brief presentation on the update on the certification of free cash. We have just recently received that certification from the Commonwealth, as you can see, as a result of, of a number of things. This is the highest free cash amount. I'm reading, trying to read upside down. It's never a good idea. $17,780,512, the highest we've had in 20 years. Of course, contributing factors included the, what we're receiving in crediting 7.9 million from the ARPA revenue loss, but also 10.6 million in free cash. This is, as has been mentioned, this has been something that the city has relied on for a number of things. And there's a presentation and recommendation later on, on the agenda. But again, I'll just turn this over to Mr. Baldwin. If there's no objection, to speak to the free cash issue.
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be very brief on this as well. Free cash is a bit of a term of art in municipal finance, and it, what it is, is it represents the unspent balance at the end of the fiscal year that's available for appropriation after certification by the Department of Revenue. So in essence, when the year closes, the city auditor submits the balance sheet to the Department of Revenue. Those amounts are certified. The Department of Revenue says this is how much you have available from the last year for appropriation. As the city manager mentioned, later in the agenda is a recommendation for appropriation. This is the largest amount of free cash that we've had in quite some time, and that's for a number of reasons. It, it does allow us certain flexibility. One of the practices that was just mentioned a few moments ago is that we have used free cash to replenish the reserves that we've had to use to balance the budget and to mitigate the impact on taxes of the budget each year. That is one of the recommendations here, not only to replenish, but to build reserves. That is something that will positively impact our credit rating, and we can discuss that in more detail when we get to that item on the agenda. But I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Counselor Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We heard a second ago that the projected budget of about $10 million shortage possibly. Will this free cash can be used to offset some of that deficit and then some put in reserve? Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Yeah, I just want to address the, what's been referred to as a deficit. So this happens every year at a time when department heads put in their requests, and it always exceeds the reasonable budget. And the Finance Department and, you know, my office works really closely with every department to try and hone the numbers. So we're not affecting core services, but at the same time, being responsible to the taxpayers. And so that will, this is, this is the first pass. We're very early on in the, in the process, so, you know, it, I, I don't want the council to think there is this solid $10 million deficit. This is just on, on the first go-around, and that will be worked, worked on quite a bit. So by the time it comes to the council, you know, we, we don't expect there to be that kind of a deficit. But, but, you know, first requests, you do see that. And, and that's part of the art of working to finalize and present the budget.
I, I understand, and I appreciate that very much. I understand, but, you know, the department head wishes certain things to have, for example, extra personnel, you know, to, to carry the load and things like that, you know. So then after you realign the balance, there's still deficit, would that free cash can also offset that? That's would be my question. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the council, there, there are recommendations tonight as to how to utilize free cash. That will, you know, be discussed and maybe referred to subcommittee. I'm not sure what the will of the council will be. But it certainly is the council's jurisdiction to, to decide how the free cash is spent.
Thank you, Madam Manager.
Counselor Mosia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions. When we look at the enterprise fund in the sewer, it's 3.8 million water, 1.5 parking, $549,000, but that figure is lower than it usually is due to the pandemic and people weren't coming downtown in the areas to go out to eat. And so the revenue from that is down. That's quite understandable. So through you, Mr. Mayor, to Connor, what, how much did we, as a city, bring in from property taxes?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The property tax levy is approximately $154 million, which represents about a third of the revenue for the general fund.
Did you say $154 million? Okay. And how, and how much of that was attributed to new growth?
Approximately 2 mil, just over $2 million in the last year was from new growth, which is the additional properties that come on during the year, folks, when they make additions to their home. New assessed value is what we call new growth.
Is that 2.3 million put in, is the total to the 154 million that's in there or-
Inclusive, yes, that's inclusive of the new growth.
Okay, that's fine. Next, when we look for the transfer of the attachment A, as to what line item went in to create the 17.78 million, we see that, and I hate to try to overstep anybody, but there's a motion tonight by Counselor Gishia and Scott, Counselor Scott, to look into purchasing a new ladder truck for the fire department as soon as possible. And it says right in here that it's going to happen. They're going to purchase one, right?
Well, that's up to the council, if the council approves.
So-
I mean, that's a recommendation.
So if we do support that, does that motion speak for itself? Okay, that's just a thought. And then I see, this is what I see, Fund Number 6822 in the transfer from paving sidewalks. So it looks to me, maybe I'm wrong here, but it looks like 2.6 million is left over? Am I seeing that right, or what am I seeing here? The transfer attachment A, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Connor Baldwin?
Mr. Baldwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The recommendation is to appropriate the full balance of the free cash, the 17.78 million, for various purposes that are detailed in the attachment before the council. The two that you reference, Counselor, are for use of free cash for capital. Now, this would be sort of a pay-as-you-go capital, where we're using cash that's available, where in normal cases, we would borrow money to finance those projects. So the city will realize the savings in, in not having to pay interest on that.
So where did that come from, 2.6 million? I, I don't, we're appropriating it? I thought it was things in the budget that we didn't use, and so it was transferred over to here. Where is this coming from, 2.6 million?
If I may. Mr. Baldwin?
The 2.6 million within the appropriation recommendation would be to pay for paving or sidewalks or, or contract-
Like potholes? Potholes?
That's right.
Good.
It would be in addition, that 2.6 million is in addition to what's already been budgeted in the FY22 budget.
Okay, that's good.
So there's a $3 million budget. We're saying add 2.6 million.
Yeah, that'll be good, because there's enough potholes out there.
Yeah, and, and there's-
And I'm sure the Law Department is working overtime, because one time we had 19 claims, then 10 claims, and we had five claims. It's going down, but people are, you know, coming after the city, and rightfully so. So thank you very much. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Any other comment? Counselor Leahy?
Thank you. Through you to the manager. I know we're going to get to those budget items later in the meeting, but I did want to bring up the road repairs also with some of that. And I know Kara's sick of me calling her all week, but the road repairs really are, you know, a top priority, and especially Andover Street. You know, I've done a little research on that, and we've got to really, we can't keep filling everything with asphalt over there. We have to really come up with a plan for a major repair in the next few years. But I think there are some products out there that we should try to fill these holes with cement again, so we don't have a, a patchwork up and down Andover Street. So if we could look into that, but it has been a few weeks, and we really need to get on the major roads and then out into the neighborhoods. So if that could begin this week, being a top priority.
Yeah, I know they're out, and they were out today with the, but with the asphalt, with the patch, you know.
Yeah.
Some of the holes were, they're just enormous that are popping up. We're getting about 80 a day called in, and the crews are trying to do as many, you know, as they can.
Yeah.
You know, we've had two and, and three crews out, you know, that, so it is a top priority. As far as Andover Street, you know, we had looked at that a couple of years ago, and I know there was a report, in order to properly repair it. Yeah, in the long run, you know, it's, it's cost-wise, because you're not filling them every other day, which is what, when it doesn't take to the cement.
Right.
But we can, we can look at that in, in terms of these capital projects.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comment? Here none. I need a motion to accept a petition filed by Counselor Ruck, second by Counselor Yam, on the FY21 post, say no, the eyes have it, motion is carried. We now go to 4.3, Communication, Appointment of Marion Mitchell to Board of Parks. Any comments? Counsel Robinson?
So on E-codes, we have an ordinance that's, I believe it's Section 56-30, Members of Boards and Parks and Commissions. All persons appointed to membership on Boards and Commissions of the City shall be residents of the city during the terms for which they're appointed, except for the required physician member of the City of Lowell Board of Health, so long as said physician owns or is a member of an established practice within the City of Lowell. There shall be preference to a select physician who is a Lowell resident whenever possible and practicable, subject to the discretion of the city manager. It was raised- was raised by some members of the community that this recommended appointment no longer lives in the city. At the time applied, he was a resident. It was a lapse of seven to eight months before they even heard back. So again, I think this is one of the things with the boards, that we're going to have to take a look at the process because an applicant applies.
If he's not a resident, then that's an issue. So, I mean, what we had last was that he was a resident. So we can, we can hold, suggest that we hold off on that vote.
Delay it. Motion to delay.
We weren't notified, but we'll follow up on that.
Okay, thank you.
Through you to Counsel Robinson. If we know that, then why don't we move the vote and then put removal so that we can get somebody on that, in that position that we have?
We have other applicants, so.
Yeah, so why not just vote no to this one and then?
Well, in fairness, I just want to make, I want to just make, it's not that I doubt that what Counsel Robinson's been told. I just want to reach out to the individual and just verify that.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. So that motion is basically delayed until pending residency verification?
Right. If there is a verification, we'll bring it back forward. Otherwise, there are other potential applicants.
Okay, thank you.
4.4, Communication, Reappointment of Peter Finnegan to Border Parks. Any comments? Hear none. Need a motion to adopt by Counsel Drinkwater, second by Counsel Leahy. Roll call, please.
Mitch Chow?
No.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitcher?
No.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
No.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
No.
Counsel Rourke?
No.
Counsel Scott?
No.
Counsel Yam?
No.
Our motion fails.
We're now going to five votes from the city manager. 5.1, vote accept expend Fire Safe Grant for LFD, waifu reading and second reading by title. Vote authorizing the city manager acting through the fire department to accept and expend grant in a total amount of $11,275 from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Department of Fire Services fiscal year 2022, SAFE grant award, and to accept and expend grant in a total amount of $3,655 from Department of Fire Services fiscal year 2022, senior safe grant award. Motion to adopt by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Mosia. Any comment, Counsel Mosia?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. When we have this safe grant for $11,275, the fire, some firemen will go in to the schools or something to talk about fire safety. Would that be considered part of maintenance of effort? It would.
Madam Manager?
Mr. Baldwin is saying that that is, we have an agreement with the school department as to what services would constitute maintenance of effort, and Mr. Baldwin is indicating that that is included or covered for that agreement.
It would be. Thank you.
No other comment. Roll call, please.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitcher?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yam?
Yes.
11 yeas.
5.2, vote authorize city manager to execute a deed pursuant to 1991, vote to abandon public interest in a portion of Medex Place, waifu reading and second reading by title. Vote authorize the city manager pursuant to a 1991 order of the city council, Exhibit A, to execute a put claim deed for property located at Medex Place in Lowell, Medex County, Massachusetts, as shown as Lot D on Land Court Plan 785-D to W holding LLC. Motion to adopt by Counselor Noon, second by Counsel Robinson. Any comment, Counsel Mosia?
What is this all about? I don't understand.
Yeah, I will defer to the city solicitor. This is an old vote from the city council, even before our time, Counseler.
Oh, boy. That's why we didn't remember.
I'd ask the solicitor to explain why this council's being asked to take a vote.
Sure. This was, the law department was contacted, and it's a private matter where the, the parties have been going through Land Court, and the Land Court judge, since the vote is so old, had asked for a new vote of the council pursuant to this original order. And the new order would specifically authorize the manager to execute a deed. It's not a project that I'm personally familiar with, but, but again, it does follow up on a vote that was taken a long time ago.
Is it property or land? Is it, is it a building or is it just land?
I'm not sure if there's, it's definitely some open space. I'm not sure if there's also a building on it. I believe it's just open space, though.
It's a matter that the council voted in 1991 to transfer and did transfer, but for whatever reason, the judge is saying they want a new vote. Maybe, maybe something in the original deed wasn't properly done, but that's the request from the Land Court.
Correct. The, what the judge is looking for is some specific authorization to the city manager to, in fact, execute the deed, which was apparently missing in the 1991 vote.
Okay.
It's not land that we're dealing with now. It was conveyed out. It's just in the chain of title and the issue before the Land Court. They're asking for a new vote.
All right.
We're not party to the lawsuit, so we really don't know why, but.
Thank you. As long as we're not paying on his property, we have enough bills without that, but thanks.
No other comments. Roll call, please.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitcher?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yam?
Yes.
That's 11 yeas.
5.3, vote FY '21 Free Cash Certification and Recommendation, Waifu Reading and Second Reading by Title. Vote that the amount of $17,780,500 be appropriated from July 1, 2021, certified free cash more fully described in Attachment A to various accounts, more fully described in Attachment A, adopt by Counselor Yam, second by Counselor Noon. Any comment? Counsel Robinson?
I'm just curious. Number 13, Recommended Appropriations, appropriate to the Diversity and Inclusion Stabilization Fund, $183,720. What, what exactly does that fund do?
So that was a fund that the last council created. It was a voluntary donation, you know, when you, taxpayers, it wasn't on the tax bill, but there was a mailing that they could contribute to a fund. The fund would be to further some of the goals and initiatives of diversity, equity, and inclusion that were established. The amount of participation has been very minimal. The fund is established, but there's really not much in it. We had a report, I think, a couple of weeks ago, saying what the balance was. What this recommendation is, is to, is to include this balance so that we can start building that fund balance. It would be up to the council as to how that would be spent. But, you know, there could be training. There could be a number of things, you know, that, that the, these monies could support initiatives through the Diversity Equity Officer that is heading up that, or others that the council deems appropriate. Just to have, have at least a fund in that line item.
And, thank you. And so basically, once that fund is built, it would come from a council recommendation as to something like if training or something that surfaced?
Yeah, it would require a two-thirds vote of the council to transfer money. So, you know, if council had a motion to do something, training, we'll just say, and some kind of specific training. You could file a motion, and it would require a two-thirds vote to use that money for that purpose.
Okay, thank you very much.
There was never such a fund before it was established, but it just, you know, it, the city hadn't put money in. At that point, it was, you know, public participation was, was the expectation.
Counsel Scott?
Thank you. I would just like to thank you for the inclusion of the ladder truck in this free cash document. There was a plan to discuss it at the Finance, the Finance Subcommittee meeting. Mr. Gitcher and myself had spoke to Connor Baldwin about doing this. We didn't, we ran out of time at that Subcommittee meeting, and we didn't make a motion. So I, we put it on the agenda this evening. But that has been included here, and obviously a very important purchase. By doing this, hopefully it also frees up money in the capital plan going forward to make improvements in our firehouses as well. So this is very timely for this purchase. Thank you.
No other comment. Roll call, please.
Mayor Chow?
Yes.
Counsel Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counsel Gitcher?
Yes.
Counsel Janess?
Yes.
Counsel Leahy?
Yes.
Counsel Mercia?
Yes.
Counsel Noon?
Yes.
Counsel Robinson?
Yes.
Counsel Rourke?
Yes.
Counsel Scott?
Yes.
Counsel Yam?
Yes.
11 yeas.
Six orders from the city manager, 6.1, loan order, 2 million.
Mr. Mayor, can we bundle six, make a motion to bundle 6-1 and 6-2?
Great idea. Motion to bundle by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Gitcher, on the favor of the Ay, opposed by no, the Ay is covered. Motion is carried. I'm going to just read 6.1, 6.2, 6.1, loan order, 2 million for replacement of parking kiosk. 6.2, loan order, 7,508,000 for repairs to Ayard and Downs Parking Garage. Any comment? Mr. Clerk, roll call, please.
No roll call. Do you see the motion to refer him to a public hearing on April 5 at 7:00 p.m.?
Good one for all in favor of the Ay, opposed by no. Do a quick motion. Motion by Counsel Gitcher, second by Counsel Drinkwater, all in favor of the Ay, opposed by no, the Ay is covered. Motion is passed. Seven, report, 7.1, Subcommittee Report, the Auditor Clerk Oversight and Personnel Subcommittee, March 21st was canceled. Two, Housing Subcommittee, March 22nd. Counselor, you're the chair? Counsel Yam?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Housing Subcommittee met at 5:30 with myself, the Chair, and Counselor Drinkwater and Counselor Noon present. Also, Counselor Mercia was at, present at the meeting as well. The meeting is to talk about the MBTA community projects, a part of the legislation that was passed in, in January of 2021, established a MBTA zone, and Lowell is one of the MBTA communities. The legislation required that a minimum of density, at least 15 unit per acre, and then not, and then not more than half of a mile from the commuter rail station. And also, there's no age restriction, and it's suitable for family with children. The, the City of Lowell is not compliant, so we have Ms. McCall and her staff made presentation, and then also suggest a certain project, the next step for the City of Lowell to undertake so that we are in compliance. And Ms. McCall and her staff has laid out that the deadline for compliance is May 22nd, when, when the city submit the informational form to the DHCD, and then March 31st, 2023, the MBTA community must provide DHCD with a proposed action plan. And then December 31st, 2023, the MBTA community must adopt the zoning amendment. Ms. McCall also informed the committee as that there was a grant that received, and the grant was a, hired a consultant that will put together this guideline. Please keep in mind that this project, this MBTA community has a detrimental for the City of Lowell. If you not comply, we may not receive all these fundings, for example, Mass Works, Housing Choice, and Local Capital Projects Fund. So it is imperative that we, the City of Lowell, undertake this and then make some changes to the zoning law, that the, that the permit for the housing is by rights, not, not, not by a special permit. That's what we have right now in the City of Lowell. This is, and then also the reasonable size, and their discussion in the law will lay out what is reasonable size. And then I mentioned earlier, part of the gross density is 15 unit per acre, and I don't think Lowell met that. So we had some work to do, but Ms. McCall and her staff is already under, you know, on the way to, to put all of that together. So I'm so grateful for Ms. McCall and her staff. And I just want to thank my colleagues on the committee and Counselor Mercia as well. So if I miss anything, my colleagues can add in. Counselor Drinkwater, Counselor Noon. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent report. Any other comment? No other comment. I need a motion to accept the report, as reported progress by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Leahy, on the favor of the Ay, opposed by no, the Ay is covered. Motion is carried. 7.2, wire inspection, National Grid requests installation of four-inch gas main from 114 South Whipple to Sydney Street. Any comment? Hear none. Motion to accept and adopt accompanying orders by Counsel Scott, second by Counsel Robinson. Motion passes. Eight petitions, 8.1, claims, fight property damage. Any comment? Motion to refer to Law Department for report and recommendation by Counsel Janess, second by Counsel Drinkwater, all in favor of the Ay, opposed by no, the Ay is covered. Motion passed. We now go to the city council motions. 9.1, Counsel Leahy requests city manager have the DPW address the trees at Fort Hill Park for spring openings, again by Counsel Scott. Counsel Leahy?
Thank you. Motion pretty much speaks for itself, but I hope there's like a tree maintenance program for the spring, you know, not only just Fort Hill, but probably all the parks throughout the city. But a few people called up about the trees in the lower section of Fort Hill, but then as you do go up the hill into the top part of Fort Hill, there's quite a few limbs that are dangerously, I don't know, dead or falling or whatever. So if we could have that addressed. Thank you.
Any other comments? Hear none. All in favor of the Ay, opposed by no, the Ay is covered. Motion is carried. 9.2, Counsel Gitcher, Counsel Scott, request city manager look into purchasing a new ladder truck for the fire department as soon as possible. Any comment? Counsel Gitcher?
I just want to thank the manager for putting that forward. I think it's an important piece, and I want to thank you in your office for taking that immediate action. Thank you.
Counsel Scott, all in favor of the Ay, opposed by no, the Ay is covered. Motion is carried. 9.3, Counsel Scott, request city manager provide an update on work planned and or completed around rodent control within our neighborhoods, second by Counsel Leahy. Counsel Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually a follow-up. I received, I've been receiving a lot of complaints from residents, especially around the areas off of Gorm Street between Corbett and Bowden Street, and another area around Main Street and Montreal Street. Quite a few of them in that area have contacted me. This, there was a motion that was made back in October by Counsel Rourke on this very issue, and I pulled up the response before I made the the motion, and some of the things that, you know, it says would be completed, it says second, Chris Haley at DPW is preparing draft documentation that was going to be dispersed through the neighborhoods to make folks more aware of how rats can be combated on their property, and then it also calls for a dedicated page on the city's website to give broader availability to the information, and I haven't seen any of those things happen, I mean, I go to the neighborhood meetings, et cetera, and I, I just think right now, it's a real issue, and we need to be on top of it, thank you.
Madam Manager?
Yeah, we, I, I did speak with Mr. Slagel, I know there's a, a website or, and email where we get complaints about rodents in Lowell, but we'll have a report, there are other things that we're going to be able to do, especially around our paddles now, and so that's another recommendation, but, you know, if you've seen what Somerville and Cambridge are doing with some of these, let's call it rat traps that are kind of state of art, so we'll get you that report of ongoing, I'll double check on, on, on the page as well.
Yes, if you could just check on the outreach that's being done, because you're not going to come up with the information, the data that you're trying to, come up with heat maps, it says, without any outreach to the neighborhoods.
Right.
I mean, they're calling me up, they're saying there're giant rats running through the streets, I mean, pretty.
Yeah, I mean, if, they should call, you know, either contact us, because I know we have, there's certain sections in, I think it's East Pawtucketville that, that we have records of, but, but there are complaints throughout the city, but I'll double check on the streets that you mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other hands, on favor of the I, opposed by the no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Nine point four, Council Rourke request city manager have DPW and city engineer develop a plan to address drainage issues on Freedom Way, second by Council Noon, Council Rourke.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, from what I know, something is in the works, hopefully that we can take care of this, thank you.
Here are no other comments, on favor of the I, opposed by the no, the eyes have it, motion is carry.
Mr. Mayor, could you nine, five, and nine seven together, please?
Motion of nine point five, nine point six by Council Rourke, second by Council Mercier, motion passed, nine point five, Council Rourke, Council Robinson, request city manager have lands and buildings department replace the dugout roofs at Campbell and Cody Fields, nine point six, Council Robinson, request city manager have proper department.
Nine point seven, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry?
Nine point seven.
Oh, nine point seven.
Yep.
Motion of nine point five and nine point seven, not nine point six. Nine point seven, Council Robinson, request city manager have proper department work with DPW lands and buildings and the Greater Lowell vote to see if we can get students to come in and repair facade of West Sixth Street Fire Station, Council Rourke or Council Robinson? Council Rourke?
Yes, so nine five and nine seven, again, these are some, some issues that, that have been in need for quite some time, I believe, West Sixth Street went out to bid, there were, there were no takers on that job when it went out as a RFP, I think we reach out to community partners, such as vocational kids, see if they'll work with our DPW lanes of buildings, as well as youth build, and see if there's interest in, in maybe accomplishing some of these tasks, same thing with the dugouts, I think these are some, some items that could be rectified with working with community partners, thank you.
Another comment, Council Rourke?
I think, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I have been contacting the vocational school, and they're more than willing to come out and help RFP, thank you.
Any other comment? Council Leahy?
Sure, thank you, again, this is a good opportunity, and I'm glad that Council Rourke reached out, but this has always been an issue with the unions, and, I mean, we really need to get an agreement with the union, if we're going to let these kids come out, work on some of the easier projects, the safer projects, like the dugout roofs, where we don't have to worry about fall protection and, and things like that, insurance issues, but we really need to make a commitment, because we've all had these motions on, it's been years, let's see if we can really get something done, you know, I've reached out to Mr. Getchir on the Vocational School Board, we have Mr. Getchir here with us, so, I mean, let's get this done, we really need to get these kids involved, give them some real-world application here, and it benefits everybody, benefits school, benefits us, so let's see if we can really make this work, thank you.
Any other comments? Council Getchir?
Sometimes there's programs through the Career Center that you can actually hire the students from Greater Lowell, and a teacher, and the teacher will work with them in the summertime to do things like that, so maybe through the Career Center, you can work that out also, and they can get the Greater Lowell kids to do that in certain shops.
Seeing no other hands, on favor of the I, opposed by the no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Motion nine point six, Council Robinson, request city manager have proper department provide an update on status of hot pot restaurant on Medex Street, second by Council Janess, Council Robinson.
Yeah, the, um, they were, they came before the council some weeks back, and a couple of people have reached out since, just to try to find out a status update as to what's holding that process up, they're saying it's holed up in City Hall, they're trying just to get moving, so I, I'm not really familiar with where it's at, thank you.
Maybe the solicitor can enlighten us.
Sure, the, there was a lease that they had sent to us, I've been in touch with their attorney, there were some minor changes to the lease, we were anticipating, actually, it was going to get wrapped up today, but it should be wrapped up tomorrow.
Thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Any other comment? Here none, all in favor of the I, opposed by the no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Now go to motion nine point eight, we'll move on a little bit, nine point eight, Council Robinson, request city manager provide update as to when policy regarding closure of engine six, engine four, and engine ten was adjusted to be included in brownout situation, second by Council Rourke, Council Robinson.
This is, again, it appears to be somewhat of an odd issue until the end of the fiscal year, I know from digging around that this agreement was a verbal agreement, it was never memorialized in writing, it was done in, I believe, ninety-two by Manager Johnson, and it was basically in response to the closings of engines five, eight, and nine, I believe, and, and which left those areas pretty much one, one-house areas, and there was an agreement in place verbally around that time, that those specific would not be closed, and so I was just trying to find out if, if the city might have had any information or record of that from the past, but again, in no way am I advocating any house to be closed.
Yeah.
Madam Manager?
We'll, we'll check, I'm not aware of the Johnson verbal agreement, I am aware that Old Ferry Road does not get, if that's one of the, that does not get closed because of its location, but we'll get you an update from the chief on.
Thank you, yeah, that's engine ten, Old Ferry, and then engine six is West Sixth, thank you.
Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's too bad we didn't suspend the rules and pull this motion out while the chief was here, he could have answered it for you, I'm sorry, I, I didn't think of it.
I, I just saw his text, too, he, he did wait for a while.
Yes.
But I didn't realize.
I didn't either.
But we'll get a response from, from the chief.
But he did, he did wait.
Thank you.
One more question.
Council Leahy?
So, sort of relates to this motion, but when we get these reports, can we find out to, sometimes you, you, the trucks are down, and we have relatively small service department, right, we can't, I think we have one mechanic for the fire department, we should look into, you know, some of these engines, they can't be down for two days, three days, but maybe there's an outside firm that could come in and help us, I mean, I was at one fire, and the pumper was leaking water, and they just can't afford to have it down for two or three days, but maybe if we had a contractor come in, they could take it apart in two or three hours, put it back together, and then it's not leaking all over the place, so we should look into that, too, when we're addressing these issues.
Yeah, I, I do know that they do send the trucks out oftentimes for repairs, because of the nature of the, depending on what's wrong, you know, like the, the ladder truck that was talked about.
Yeah.
That was burned, literally, the ladder.
Yeah, I saw that, that was.
And that had to go to Greenpoint, or, you know, to be repaired, but at the same time, the backup for ladder two also had a hydraulic, there was, there was a, a major repair, that had to go out, but it's back, so, so they do send them out to third parties, and it sometimes takes a few days, sometimes, you know, but yeah, some of them, they can't do in-house.
All right, thank you.
Here are no other comments, on favor of the I, opposed by the no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Nine point nine, Council Robinson, request city manager work with Lowell Public Schools to discuss creation of centralized facilities department with the focus on maintenance of effort charge, charge of, second by Council Rourke, Council Robinson?
Thank you, it's pretty self-explanatory.
All in favor of the I.
Mr. Mayor?
Council Leahy?
Good.
Council Leahy, you want to defer to Council Rourke?
Yeah, I was just going to say, Mr. Clerk, we have that Facilities Subcommittee set up, right, for April, do you remember the date?
I don't recall the dates specifically, but it's sometime in April.
All right, and then this can be part of the agenda, too, so, thank you.
Council Rourke, anything else?
Thank you.
All in favor of the I, opposed by the no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Last motion of the night, nine point ten, Council Drinkwater, request city manager provide an update on progress toward integrating the city council documents spreadsheet on the website into a publicly accessible online dashboard to enhance the accessibility of public documents and information, second by Council Getchir, Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is a follow-up to a motion that I had filed last year, the idea was just to create sort of a centralized location on the website, where the public would have access to the motion responses that we get every week, as well as other informational reports that, that may be of interest, the result of the, the motion was the creation of an Excel spreadsheet that, that does, is a centralized place, where you can, you know, see, have access to, to motion responses and informational reports, I actually find it very helpful, I'm sure that, as the members of Council can attest, we're, we're constantly searching for, you know, motions from previous meetings, oftentimes it can be difficult to track down which week they occurred on, so the, the spreadsheet, which is linked through the website, has been very helpful, but in the original motion response, it, it had referred to a, a follow-up, once the, the city had implemented the new version of the website, that it might be possible to actually have that database sort of live, live on a webpage, and make it a little bit more accessible than having to deal with a separate Excel, so now that the new website has been implemented, I just wanted to get a follow-up on that, and, you know, just try to make these reports as, as accessible as possible, I just, if you look at tonight, there's a lot of information that's very valuable to the public, just want to make it as accessible as possible, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other comments? Here none, all in favor of the I, opposed by the no, the eyes have it, motion is carry. Ten announcements, any announcements? Here none, I just want to remind that there is American Red Cross Blood Drive at the senior center this Saturday, starting at nine o'clock in the morning, I encourage everyone to, to come and share the information, any other announcement? Council Yem?
On behalf of my colleague, city councilor, I just want to wish Council John a happy birthday, which coming up Monday, so now I got the title as the chair of the Happy Birthday Subcommittee, so.
Congratulations, Council Yem, and happy birthday, Council Leahy. Eleven adjournment, motion by Council Getchir, second by Council Mercier, on favor of the I, opposed by the no, the eyes have it, motion is carry, have a great night, everyone.